I mean, the point is that we're not having the District Student Council sit through all night while we're working on this. So I would just like to move earlier in the agenda. After public comment, we'll be fine.
Any other items that would like to be moved? An item before we have discussion and action on it.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion on the item? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
No.
No.
Eyes have it? So then we will move along and elevate the student council report.
Come on up. How are you guys tonight?
Good, how are you guys?
Thanks for coming.
Of course.
You guys want us to sit?
Sure.
Okay.
Please and thank.
Do we have to talk into the mic? Okay, this is our update for this one.
Who are you guys?
Oh, I'm Chelsea McDowell. I'm the DECA and Student Council liaison.
I'm Karen Tassmer and I'm Secretary of Student Council. Okay, so we're gonna start with just our holiday spirit weeks that happened before our winter break. That went pretty well. I feel like we had a lot of good participation. And we made posters. That was fun for our council to do. Pretty much. Our holiday activity night took place on December 20th from 6:30 to 9:00. We had cookie decorating and karaoke and raffles, baskets. The kids came and that was fun. We didn't make a ton of money, but we still had fun. So we're not sure if we're gonna do it or not next year, but we'll see. For prom, the venue's gonna be at Milwaukee County Zoo, which we're excited about. Oh yeah, catering's gonna be through Maddie's. That's where is that? It's like off, kind of like in front. Anyway, it's good. And the board is gonna be going and sampling it and with the snacks and stuff.
It's always good.
Yeah, make sure the food is good.
So you'll be able to walk through the zoo while you're there or just confined to one of the rooms?
Um, I, we have like a, I'm not sure exactly. It's one of the, um, what's it called? Convention kind of like rooms. I think it's in the pri- yeah, in the primate exhibit.
Oh.
So I think we're gonna have like, you know, the board rock like going up to.
Cool.
So, and I think the primate exhibit is also gonna be open, so kids gonna go through that, which is cool, I guess.
That's cool.
Some future plans that we're thinking about is possibly like a winter or spring dance. We didn't have one last year, but I know that some students were kind of disappointed in that. So we're thinking of sending out a survey to ask the student body if they want another one, because I know a lot of people have expressed that they want it. Um, yeah, that's pretty much it, I think. Okay, that's it. Any questions or concerns or comments?
Do you have any crazy head gear for the Christmas thing?
Oh, we had a, we had a lot of Santa hats, a few reindeer antlers. Yeah.
Who comes up with the spirit days? They've been so great lately. It's been so fun.
Thanks. We kind of like start them off, I guess, in our exact board meetings usually that we have on Tuesdays. But then we obviously like let the whole council vote on them or like we ask them if they want any other spirit days and stuff.
So in teen speak, is it called grout?
Grout fit?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we can't, that was a fun one that we came up with.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's pretty much it.
I can't. Any other questions for the student council? Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Good job.
Moving on to number three, staff, student and donation recognitions, gifts and donations under $1,000. Madam Treasurer.
Yeah, so there's a couple things that we'd like to recognize. A gift from the Whitnell Park Rotary in the amount of $800, which is listed as an educator grant for college and career readiness field trips to M A T C and U W M. There is a gift from the Whitnell Park Rotary Club in the amount of $150, a donation to the National Honor Society. And I think that's it for right now. Thank you to our donors for those gifts.
Very good. Thank you as well. Moving on to four, the consent agenda. We only have one item and that is personnel recommendations. Do I have a motion to accept the personnel recommendations?
So move.
I have a first.
Second.
And a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it? Five A, action item of the 2324 educator contract days with a tabled motion. I think that should be a 2425 educator days for the contract. And since we have suspended the rules of order, public comment, so first on the list is Sarah Blonsky. Please state your name, your address, and keep your comments to three minutes.
My name is Sarah Blonsky. My address is 4303 South 118th and Greenfield. I had a few concerns about the calendar information. So when I was reviewing the things, it said there was 14 days for PD. But then when I was adding them up, they added up to 15 and a half, so I just wanted to make sure there was clarification on that. And that also seemed to include a combination of PD and workdays. So just some clarification on what is a workday, what is a PD day? Are workdays truly workdays where teachers actually get to work in their classroom? Or are they filled up with unofficial PD group, or school meetings in the building? Because that makes a huge difference to teachers. They really do need work time in their classrooms to get things done. And then if they truly are workdays where a teacher is just coming in and working in their classroom, is it necessary that as a district we hold them to that 8 to 4 P M contracted time? Or is there room to give them the ability to act as professionals as is common in most fields where they can make, decide how to get their work done and where to get it done? As a teacher, I took things home all the time, worked into the long hours at night. And so really allowing teachers to have that flexibility to do their professional job in the way that works for them and that helps families in as well. So just really trying to clarify, what is a workday, what is a PD day? What does that look like for our district? Because if they truly are workdays, it's not gonna take, it's not gonna take away from the preparedness for the curriculum. It will just allow them to have flexibility in how they achieve their work.
Next would be Luann Bird.
Hello, it's always nice to follow students. They're so great. The students we're fond to see.
Please state your name, your address.
Oh, Luann Bird. 5155 Brandon's Court in Hills Court, so apologies for that. I do want to speak too to the Teacher Professional Development Days. I think our teachers are awesome as well and I just think that there's always changes and teachers always need those PD days. And right now, there's educators in my family and we're having lots of talks about the reading curriculum and how much time it's gonna take and which programs we're gonna use. I first have to ask, are we approving this year's 2324? That's what's posted, not next year's.
It's supposed to be the 2425 calendar.
You can't then talk about that tonight. You cannot vote on that if it's posted wrong. I'm sorry. It's Professional Development Days for next year, correct? Not this year. Just double checking.
Yeah, you are correct.
I am correct. You cannot vote on that. Well, I'll make my final comments because you'll have to bring it back. I just want to say that in terms of your support of teachers is, is great and that you listen and that you hear things, I think that's great. We need teachers to be supportive. We need those days. What I want to just mention is that the role, and there are, the role of the board isn't though to get into the details of how these Professional Development Days are set. That is what you delegate to your superintendent. And if you do hear complaints, which I hope everybody's ears are open, you, you got a chain of command and you send them back through that chain of command. So making sure that you're, when you're taking time away, spending time, this much time on details that you don't know enough about what's happening within the district, that's an operational item. And I don't think it's your business to be delving that deeply into it. Now, when you do have questions, as was earlier started, you know, again, giving administration the opportunity to bring back data that might support or might not support the questions you have is fine. I just don't think that you want to just blatantly be cutting recommendations from administrators. It's not a good practice. You need to be on the same governing page. It really, that is the best way to reach kids and that's why you're here. That's why we're all here. We want to do the best. So focusing on the big picture, the direction, making sure you have enough money, making sure the students are being reached. And I'll just end with this. If you are getting into the details of the superintendent's job, you cannot hold him or her accountable. If you are running the district, you lose your opportunity to govern. You lose your opportunity to give the direction to the superintendent that they need through the evaluation process. And it's very hard. The student test scores are going down. Who are you gonna blame for that? If you have cut PD days this year or next year, whose fault is that then? Don't they need these PD days? Why, why don't you let the superintendent manage that part of your job and approve it? Those are my final comments. Thank you.
Thank you. A motion to resume normal order of operations of the agenda.
I'll second that.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. So with the item being listed incorrectly as the 2324 educator contract days, Ms. Bird is correct that we cannot make mo, make any sort of action on the item because it is improperly noticed. So, and since the item isn't noticed in the correct manner, we cannot have a discussion about it, about the 2425, even in the theoretical. So I believe we need to move on then to the next item, which is six A.
So Jason, can I just say that I think then if people have questions or want information for the following meeting, that maybe we could submit those questions or items to administration?
Absolutely.
All right.
And that should be the case regardless.
All right, thank you.
So moving on to six, discussion with future action. A, student open enrollment for 2425. Mr. John Dour.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So a couple things. One, this is, requires us to be, do this, bring this to you because it needs to be voted on before February 1st, provided the information in there. In getting the information or doing the information, the spreadsheet is attached. Know that it is, I use a mathematical formula based on previous years. And so it's not an exact science. We look at the information from our census, our birth for the, from four years ago to do our 4K and look and see what roughly, well, not roughly, we look exactly what has been our enrollment based on that census data, but know that that census data was birthed from four years ago. Things have changed. We also have used the last five years of historical data in order to project forward. But again, it's mathematical, or based on mathematical and it's not an exact, an exact figure every year. We just do the best we can based on that. We also know that COVID kind of threw a wrench in that too with numbers, so it has skewed it a little bit. Nothing, nothing, I guess I would say major that, that I'm concerned about anything. I feel very confident about the numbers. Also know that while we, well, tonight I'm recommending 135 open enrollment seats. There's a very, very, very slim possibility that we will be filling all 135 of those seats. It just doesn't happen. While we open those, they just don't all get filled. So otherwise, everything else I think is really listed in there. The big, the big part of it to notice is, on the spreadsheet is, we do have that small number from two years ago, initial K4 and this year, or in last year, sorry, kindergarten, or in this year, first grade has continued to, while it's grown a little bit, continues to be smaller and we've reduced that section. This past, this past year, or continued to reduce that section. And again, depending on what happens with open enrollment, we may need to continue that, that section, lowered section for second grade next year.
Thank you. Open up for questions?
Sure, John, that's a total of 135 new seats that will be open?
Correct.
Why the sixth grade, do we know why that's such a big number?
Well, a big part of that is because when we look at number of, number of seats available, the, it goes from 168 optimal seats in fifth grade to 198 optimal seats. So there's always gonna be 30 spots that, unless we fill them with resident kids, that will always be a large number at that sixth grade level to be open.
Okay, thank you.
Rachel?
So historically, that has been the number for sixth grade for open enrollment? Is that what you're saying? Historically, we've had 29 seats?
No, what I'm saying is if you look at the spreadsheet there and we look at the number of optimal student counts, it's based on the number of students that would be optimal for each one. Between, at fifth grade, we say that there's a, the optimal number of students would be 168 students. At sixth grade, we've said as a district that that optimal number of students is 198. So right there always makes it that we will have 30 more seats available at the sixth grade level versus the fifth grade level. So we always have the opportunity to have a large open enrollment in at that grade level again.
But we haven't done that before?
We have been. That's been historically.
Take 21, that 29 number?
Well, it hasn't been 20. There's 30 seats that would be available this year. We're, I think we have because we have some, because it goes from 168 to 198. Oh, just because of the projection of where we would be with resident students. So it's gonna be roughly around that, that 30, that 30 number.
Like historically in sixth grade, that's what?
Correct, yep. It just depends on. Right, it depends on what the fifth grade, this year's fifth grade will look like. If that's a high number or a lower number, it could be less, it could be more than, but it's gonna be right around that 30.
Rachel, to provide some more context, remember there's only three sections at Edgerton and four sections at, at Hills Corners Elementary. When you move into the middle school and high school, middle school, there's eight sections of everything. So automatically we can gain a section of students, if you will, at sixth grade. So that's where it comes from. We have to see where our resident count is at that point. Sometimes our fifth grade classes are more than 25 kids because we've gained resident count, but not quite enough to create another fifth grade section at any one building. There were one years, right now we're down a section at Edgerton in first grade. There was a year, trying to remember, Chris, where we had to add a section to the class that went through. We actually had four sections of a grade because of the resident count. We had no open enrollment in that grade, but we had almost 100 kids at Edgerton. So that will naturally happen because we don't have four sections of grade levels at Edgerton. There's only three. But when you move to the middle school, we do, there's a gold house and a blue house, four sections of each. So that's where that natural increase of students comes. So there will always be a larger influence at sixth grade.
Oh, you want, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm not sure if I ask this now, it's about special education support. So if we have 29 students coming into sixth grade, does their specialized services follow them and then we support them here then at Whitnell with the same support?
So that's, that's a good question. The, the bottom one there too, that notice on number five is that we don't be, we do, Jackie does a calculation every year about our caseload and using DPI's formula that we don't have, we don't, we don't have any special education open enrollment seats. So there are, so none of these 135 would be special education. We wouldn't accept them.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
I don't have any questions. Karen?
Yeah, so I wanted to review how much money a open enrollment student comes in with versus how much money a resident student comes in with because the home district retains some of the funding.
So this year, it's about $8,600 for a regular ed open enrolled student. It, how much the, the district retains is based on their revenue per member. It's different. Ours is $11,323. So again, if we had an open enrolled out student, we would pay that district roughly 80, well, exactly $8,618, but we would get $11,323 from the state. So there'd be a $20, $2700 difference that we would retain for that student. But that doesn't mean that's exactly what would be, if it was vice versa, coming in, we get 8618. But what they get is based on their revenue per member.
Do we know the average cost that we spend per student?
No, it, no, we don't break it down by.
You don't calculate it like that? Okay. And then if a student comes in as an open enrolled student and then when they're a Whitnell student, they would be identified for special education? Let's say that they, you know, come here and they're evaluated once they're here in our system. You know, and things aren't presenting themselves or, you know, it's, it comes up as, as they're progressing through school. Do we apply to receive more funding to cover those students?
Yeah, I'll let Jackie answer that.
We shared this at the last meeting, that we send them back and I'll let her respond. So we're obligated to evaluate any student who is currently attending our schools. We separate out the evaluation process from the open enrollment process. So we would walk through, we would do the evaluation, determine if the student meets criteria. If the student meets criteria and services are going to be accepted, that's when the open enrollment part would come in. So whatever you approve here in January is what determines what would happen next. So if you approve as presented that there's zero seats available for a student identified with a disability, then we would then work with that family that either they're returning to their home district where services would be available, or if they're continuing here, they can't be a student, they can't accept placement. We can't offer placement here based on the decision that's made in January.
Okay, and that's because of staff workload in terms of we don't have capacity, we don't have capacity.
So we're, you know, we're using, to give you that information, we're looking at how many students do we currently provide services to that are identified? How many teachers do we have? What does that look like for caseload sizes and our ability to provide those services? And if we're, if we're projecting that we don't have space for them now, that space wouldn't change going into the following school year. So if someone is newly identified, that's what would determine our availability to provide those services.
Thank you. I think there is potentially some concern around students being, you know, quote unquote, fully funded or less than fully funded. So if a student is coming in with $8,600 of funding and we're providing an education that's valued at $11,000, I, I would wonder how that impacts our budget. I believe there's other school districts that are looking at reducing their overall open enrollment based on the fact that students who are coming into their district are coming in with lower amounts of funding. Because our district has a high number of open enrollment students, I would wonder how that is affecting us in the big picture. And so that's something that, you know, I'm interested in exploring a little bit. The other thing that I wanted to mention as sort of a thinking item, not necessarily an action item, is the capacity in our buildings. I know that it has I know that it has been discussed that we might need to add space to our Edgerton building. And then, I would wonder how that reconciles with our number of resident students versus our number of open enrollment students? If we are making an addition that is for, ultimately, we're filling that, if we're filling that building up with non-resident students, you know, I feel like we need to size for, size for our own community. And then, the point of open enrollment is that we use it to, it's a tool that helps us stabilize rather than a tool that we use to, that we use as a regular tool, you know? It's a tool to stabilize, and I would, we open enroll in many more students than open enroll out. It would be nice to see us come too closer to equilibrium there, but we're way off of an equilibrium. So, those are my comments. Thank you.
One second. Jesse?
Okay.
Cassie? Everyone gets to run.
Jackie, in a scenario where there's a student, regardless of resident status or not, who is, the teachers and/or other providers in the buildings are flagging them as possibly needing evaluation, they go through all the intervention, and they're still seeming like they need more support, the parents can choose to say no to an evaluation. Do we know how often that happens here at Whitnell? How, what percentage of the time is a child, you know, being serviced through intervention appropriately, going through all the increasing levels, and still not, we're not closing that gap, and that's really flagging the providers that, hey, there's, you know, we might need to look at more? Do we know what percentage of the time the parents are saying, I don't want my child evaluated?
I don't know that percentage off the top of my head. You know, there's a lot of information that you can gain by going through the evaluation process, saying yes to evaluation. You also then get another opportunity to say yes or no to placement. So, going through the evaluation isn't necessarily a risk.
Okay. So, follow up to that. So, if they go, if the parent says, yep, my child, I'm fine with them being evaluated, and they evaluate as being someone identified for special education services, and they're a non-resident, and they know that Whitnell wouldn't be able to support them, they don't necessarily have a choice to stay at that point, correct?
If they didn't sign placement, they could remain as a student who would not be identified as a student with a disability. They wouldn't be receiving services.
So, the rea-
So, you could stay.
So, the reason that I ask that is, I'm curious just to see, because then they're, it impacts, scenarios like that impact what the district can offer them compared to what they need. And then, there may be a disproportionate load on the classroom teacher in a scenario like that, where the child has been identified as needing additional services, but because the parent's desire. And so, that's where I feel, and maybe I'll ask some follow up questions, you know, offline as we prepare to get more insight, but I do, I'm curious about that, because that can be hard on the classroom teacher, when they can only go so far in the classroom with servicing a child. And kind of if parents know how to navigate the system. So, okay.
The only thing I would say is that those situations are very challenging for everyone who's involved. It's a very emotional, you know, time, because you certainly want to do, you know, what's best for a student, and someone who has open enrolled, has chosen, you know, Whitnell as someplace that they want their child to attend. And the circumstances are different, you know, just like in any evaluation. You know, if you are evaluating for speech and language only, and it's an articulation issue, that's a very easy thing for you, as a parent, to seek services for outside of the district. And there really wouldn't be a lot of impact to that student being, continuing to attend here. Someone with more significant needs, yes, but that's where, you know, we have means to be able to work with that parent and offer mediation and try and come to a resolution, you know, to understand where they're coming from, but also the position that we're in based on what we approve.
Thanks.
All right. I just have a handful regarding where you look at some of the class sizes and where, for instance, the high school freshmen are at a negative 10 for open enrollment, openings that the residents have, there's just a lot of kids in that age range. And I see that on a couple different markers as far as different grade levels go. Does that's, do we, where we see that happening, does that tend to be, like, that's kind of it? Or will we see a great, historically, do we see a lot of fluctuation of where, for example, the kindergarten at HCE is at a negative six? Will that be something that we can anticipate that being the case through fifth grade? And then, when they jump to the middle school, where there is that, they each jump to that 29, or to get to that 198 number, that, that would kind of get washed out? Or is this something where it's a year by year, and we typically don't see a hold as far as that enrollment number goes?
Well, I'll try to answer your question. Let me know if this does. So, again, part of this is based on the resident students or the number of students from the previous year that then are mathematically calculated in to project what next year's current student will look like, or current resident, or current headcount students will look like next year. That's where the fluctuation looks like in this case, when you're talking at second grade, or I'm sorry, the negative six was at?
Kindergarten at HCE?
Oh, thank you. Yeah, at kindergarten at HCE. Again, next year, depending on what comes to fruition, will 143 kids, will it actually work that way mathematically? That could fluctuate a little bit up or down. The other part of that is, is again, it just depends on what we open enrolled last year, what our resident, do we have, those age groups move in resident this year to be able to get that number? To answer your, or to, the part, second part of your question is, yes, at some point, whether that, if it gets all the way to sixth grade, yes, it would then wash away because we'd have that, those 30 extra seats or that extra section if it does that, but it could fluctuate depending, again, on the number of kids that come and go between kindergarten and sixth grade. So, that number, it won't say negative six all the way through. It could, it could fluctuate a little bit depending on, but probably not very much.
And then, when it comes, when it comes to the projections, and it's, you know, it's a really good guess as far as it goes, and have there, have these kind of held true to what, you know, the projection kind of falls in line? Maybe we're off by two, three, or something like that? Or have there been years where the projection is that we would have, for example, you look at second grade at Edgerton where there are 17 open enrollment seats available, but all of a sudden, there's an influx of families, and that 17 gets eaten up by resident students? So, we get to that number, but we still offered that 17 to families that were in, you know, other communities. Is that something where, is that something that historically happens, or do we see it kind of fall in line with what was projected to begin with?
Right. I'm not saying it couldn't. I think there was-
Historically, it has.
Yeah, I think at one point, that happened a couple of years ago. At least, it can maybe answer to that question. I think a couple of years ago, I heard the story of where that happened, where we had a big influx one summer where there was a big number, but normally, that does not happen.
That's more the outlier than-
Correct.
Okay. Great. Going around for the second time. Quinn had-
So, we have decline in enrollment, correct?
Correct.
So, if we didn't use open enrollment students, we would have layoffs, because we wouldn't be able, we wouldn't be able to fill up our sections. We're using these, we're using these students to fill up our sections, correct? We're not starting new sections.
Correct. Yeah, we bring in about, this year, about $2.3 or $2.4 million in open enrolled funding for that. If you think about that, and again, it's over the last 10 years, roughly about $20 million of, again-
It's a profit center. There's no doubt about it.
Very much so. Without that, we would have a hard time balancing the budget.
Exactly.
And again, even if you just use $100,000 as a teacher's salary and benefits, it's not that, but even just for round numbers, that's 20, 20 teachers.
Right. We already have those staff in place.
Correct.
So, that's why we use this. It's a profit center. If we didn't, we would, first of all, when it gets to high school, we're not going to be able to offer the wide variety of classes that we want to offer our students, correct?
Correct.
Because we'd have such low numbers, we wouldn't have the amount of teachers to offer the offering of classes.
The elective areas.
So, as long as I've been on the board, we have never dipped into our fund balance to pay for our operationals. There are many districts out there that are going to operational referendum. We've never done that. And this is one of the strategies we use to stay away from that. So, how many total open enrollment kids do we have?
410 this year.
So, if you took 410 without 135?
Correct. Right, correct. We have 410 in this year.
We would be, we would be taking from our fund balance to pay for our operationals, and that's not where we want to be. So, this is, to me, and the numbers and data prove it out, this is a profit center. There's no doubt. So, thank you.
Rachel?
It's more just a concern. I feel like if a, it seems like a really hard decision for a family to make, either reject services and stay, or be ripped away from your school and attend another school to receive services. I also worry, does this create a stigma for a student being identified for services, which there shouldn't be a stigma around? So, I think this is just a concern I have, a comment, but I absolutely understand where Quinn is coming from, that it is a profit. Definitely hear you on that, and I understand that. I just am also hearing this again, but to me, it's really hitting home when I think about stigma and special education. So, that's really the comment that I have.
Anyone else?
I have a question. John, there's a file somewhere, and I never can find it again when I want it. In some of the grades, like I look at seventh grade, for example, do you have, I remember last year, or maybe two years ago, there was a big open enrollment in seventh grade, which would make them eighth or ninth graders now, probably? So, is the thought that if we grabbed 29 open enrollment seats, if we fill them, we grab 29 open enrollment seats, and generally, kids stay once they're in? Would we characterize that as being the majority situation?
I think that's a general, a correct general statement.
Is that why there's so few seats at the high school? Or one of the reasons why? Because there, the reason I'm asking is I've, bringing kids into a system that late is a concern for me, because they've already had their entire primary education, and obviously, kids move in and out, and we can't control that if they're a resident, but those sorts of things do impact the system. It impacts what teachers can plan for, it impacts differentiation in the classroom. So, and I know the sixth grade situation is, you know, partially because of the seven sections turning into, needing to turn into eight. But, so this year, skipping now down to lower grades, this year, the current first grade class is one section down. Is that, am I, at Edgerton? So, then, next year, we're going to try to have three sections for them in second grade?
Unlikely, unless we would get an influx. The district will have to make a point, at what point is there a tipping point, which would make three smaller sections? We gained some this year, but not enough to create three. So, the question is, at what point, that you could lose first graders who move out of the district, too? You could lose five families who have first graders all of a sudden, and you might get five new open enrollments in, but then you're back to the point. So, it's a determination that the district makes, administration looks when the open enrollment seats are filled, and, okay, it's time to have three sections. If not, that will be one of those things where teachers will have to keep moving down a grade level unless we lose a teacher, because we will have, there won't be three sections. So, a second grade teacher at Edgerton next year, there won't be a position for that person.
So, with the 17 that are projected, 17 new for second grade at Edgerton, that still keeps us a section down?
If you would fill all those, what we're saying is it's extremely unlikely to fill 17 seats in one grade level in one year. That just, it just doesn't happen. It has, there was a lower class a while ago, I think by the time they were eighth graders, we got up to the point that they were at a normal size. It took like eight years to sort of get to that point. So, it is unlikely in one year that you would fill that many seats in one grade level.
Okay. Because I feel, and I'm, and as I think through the same thing with the third grade class at HCE, so right now, they're second graders, there's four smaller sections, but the potential capacity to hold 13 more kids next year when they become third graders. So, that would be, you know, three kids across, roughly three kids per class could get added I get concerned when I see numbers that high in one group, because, because that's effectively an entire section of kids. And if we do have space constraints in the building, so there's that consideration that's kind of rattling around in my head, and then also, the overall makeup of open enrollment, who ends up where in which building, how we think about balancing that out, and also, 545 possible seats, I know we won't fill them all potentially, or unlikely to fill them all, puts us at like 23% open enrollment as a district, or somewhere in that range. That feels very high to me. And I understand the financial aspect of it. I struggle, though, with that high of a percentage of kids and looking at them as like, you know, dollars coming in. When we think about what our district is, what our community is, kids in and out with open enrollment, it does, it does impact all those things, and it especially impacts sometimes what the teachers have on their plate in the classroom, you know, from year to year. Tuition waivers, that looks pretty low, so that means when kids move out, they don't ask to stay usually?
No, those are all the kids that are eligible. That's what that is. Whether or not they do or not, that's, that's not, those are the eligible students right now for tuition.
And so, it said, not automatically accepted, oh, so if they, if they go under an open enrollment seat versus being grandfathered in, because they lived here for some portion of the year?
Right. They are just, I'm then with the other open enrollment.
Okay.
They have priorities.
Yeah. If they take an open, or if they apply for open enrollment.
There is no grandfathering. They have to make that decision. So, sometimes, a family has to move in the middle of a school year, and depending upon that date, they get a tuition waiver. And then, that family decides, I want them to stay here, or I'm, we're going to let them finish out at Whitnell, but then we do want them to move to our new district. If they're young, a lot of times, we see families say like, hey, I want them to go to our new district. Others unfortunately have to move outside of the district, not because they want to, but circumstances, and want their child to finish at Whitnell, so that they will apply for open enrollment.
Versus the tuition waiver, because then they're guaranteed a seat if they take an open enrollment.
No, a tuition waiver means that a family left the district during a timeline in which they're allowed by state statute to stay within the district. So, they need a waiver that year in which they do not have to pay tuition.
And they also don't have to apply for open enrollment that year?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, just wanted to confirm.
Correct.
Okay. Those are my questions for now. Thank you both.
Karen?
So, I just wanted to just add some thinking here. Back in October, we asked for a report on class sizes and total numbers of students in classes at all grade levels. So, we received that report today, and one thing about it that was noticeable to me was that there are a number of large class sizes in high school cour- was that there are a number of large class sizes in high school courses. I noticed, looking at it today, there's several quite large class sizes. I noticed there were a few AP classes that have large number of kids. One of my own children is in an AP class that has 32 students in that class. I do wonder about our practice, our current practice of bringing in a large number of students in the sixth grade, to then fill up the high school as they progress through the system. If our high school is looking, if our high school has very large class sizes in some of those sections, I just wonder about that relationship. I wonder about how instead it looks like if we are looking at students coming in, in the ninth grade, as they would come in from other schools in the area, schools that are K-8 schools, for example, the, the religious schools in the area, where kids might do a K-8 education at a private school, and then come to public school for the high school. I am, I do have some concerns around some of those high school class size numbers, and I wanted to just put that out there today. Thank you.
Anyone else? Moving on to seven, discussion, the WASB resolutions.
Yeah, they're in your packet. Because I'm the WASB delegate, I go to the convention on Wednesday, the, whatever day that is, 17th, 17th, I think, I don't know. But we all vote on it, so if there are any particular ones that anybody has strong feelings on, one way or the other, please feel free to email me on those, so I can make sure that I'm paying attention during that thing, if I need to speak up as, as it comes to what opinion the board might have, or individuals might have, and that way I can also make sure I report back on that specific item, determine how the whole delegation actually votes. But, again, the resolutions to put forward, that once adopted, WASB goes ahead and lobbies on behalf of those things, to hopefully change them or direct them toward the legislature, so.
Any questions?
I do. Lisa, do you know Resolution 24-02 stipends for cooperating teachers? It's not funded now. Is it planned to be funded?
Not from the legislation. I think that a, a school district brought this forward, saying that there should be stipends for teachers to take this on. So it would be one of those things that WASB, remember, these are resolutions?
Yep.
So they would support them in theory.
And try and advocate for them.
And try to advocate for that in the next legislative session. So that would mean that there would have to be new funding to come up for that. So, no, there is not. What I will tell you, though, Quinn, right now, a lot of universities provide sometimes credits or a free class to a teacher, which right now, since they don't need that for licensure, most teachers are like, yeah, so, but there is no compensation. Many local districts provide either time or different things like that, but from a statewide system, nothing is provided.
So I, I did look through them, and I would, that's the only one I would say that we, if we're going to advocate, we need, we need funding. So, that's it.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you, sir.
Moving on to eight, we'll move past A, since we already heard from the student council, to B, Winter 2023 Student Perception Survey. Dr. Ryan and Jackie.
All right, well, we have completed our winter administration of the Student Engagement Survey, so just a reminder that we had made a decision in the spring last year not to survey the full group in the fall, and so this was our first administration for the full group. So what we are hoping to convey in our presentation tonight is to review the winter completion information for the Student Engagement Survey, share a district-wide overview of data from the survey, including results from questions, comments, and themes, and then provide an overview of how survey results will continue to inform action steps related to the district's strategic plan. So for, so for our survey overview, our Student Engagement Survey, the focus is to identify an individual's interest and enthusiasm for school, which impacts their academic performance and behavior. Responses are the student perceptions. We have 33 questions that we developed as a district, categorized by advancement, belonging, or courage. We give the survey to grades three through 12, and this year, it was open from December 4th through the 6th. We had 1,573 valid responses, which was almost 85% response rate, and our grade level responses ranged from 68% up to 95%, and 339 students left comments, which was almost 22%.
Always fun to read. So when we looked at our questions, we first started off just with that micro level, looking at the individual question level, and we found our top three and bottom three questions in terms of the percentage of students who selected strongly agree or agree. We don't provide a neutral option on the survey, so students either agree or disagree, and then there's the amount to which they would agree or disagree, regular agree or strongly agree. And we had the same top three and bottom three questions as we did when we gave the survey in Winter 2023. The reason I said Winter 2024, even though they took it in December, is because last year, they took it in January, so that was Winter 23, so this is categorized as Winter 24, even though they took it about a month ago. We had our top three questions where students selected mostly strongly agree or agree, and where if I hear about a threat to school or student safety, I would report it to someone with 93%. My teachers care about me with 90% agreement, and then my teachers expect me to do my best all the time with about 89% agreement. And our bottom three were also the same as they were last winter. However, you notice that the percentages of agreement increased, even though there still are bottom three questions. So students at the school treat staff with respect, students at the school solve problems with other students by talking to them, and then students at the school treat all other students with respect. So even though those were our bottom three, we've still increased in our percentage of agreement from last winter. When we looked at our values, so now we're zooming out a little bit, we looked at the groups of questions categorized by our values of advancement, belonging, and courage. I did some comparisons from last winter to this winter, and then last spring to this winter, so you could see that change over time. From winter to winter, we increased, again, our percentage of agreement in each of these different values, anywhere from advancement at about 2% increase in agreement, to courage, which was almost a 6% increase from last winter, and it was even an increase from last spring, which was excellent. Our lowest value of, in terms of percentage of agreement, is still belonging, but we had 75% of students strongly agree or agree about all of our questions around that value of belonging. And that kind of makes sense to me when we think about adolescents, most of the students who take the survey are in sixth through 12th grade, and it's a time when you're kind of figuring out who you are and where you belong. Something new that we started to do in the spring is that we identified eight themes, smaller themes, from our groups of questions. So while we grouped questions in bigger groups about our values, advancement, belonging, and courage, we also made some smaller groups of questions around some really distinct themes. We did this because our buildings were setting some goals around what they wanted to improve, and we found that progress towards those goals were more easily, easily measured by examining themes rather by individual survey items. It's very easy to say, we're going to increase our response to this one particular question. Well, you don't really know if what you did affected that one particular question because of what you did, or because of some other external factors. So when we group those questions together, it's easier to see that change in terms of theme. In Winter 24, our highest percentage of agreement was in that theme of safety, which is the one in green. We had 89% of students either strongly agreed or agreed to all of our questions in the theme of safety, which when we looked up from last winter, was an increase of almost 4%. Our lowest percentage of agreement was in the theme of student respect, which we can kind of see when we looked at those previous questions. But again, that increased from a little over 4% from last winter. And we had a, our percentage of agreement across all eight of these themes increased from Winter 23 to Winter 24. When, we went in and took a look at the comments, this is always a fun part, because we ask an open-ended question, is there anything else you'd like us to know? And again, I try to advertise out to all students, I do read every single comment more than once. So your voice is definitely heard, and I enjoy reading them quite a bit. This year, we had, like Jackie said, 339 students left comments, which is about 22% of our respondents, and I hand code each of these comments. So they either get coded as no, they get coded as positive, if it has a positive tone, something they like about school. Neutral, we had a lot of those this year, which is students just telling us facts. If there's lots of things that they'd like us to know, like, I like Pokemon, or I think we should have a class pet. And then negative are the things that we don't like about school. So when we looked at all, across all of the comments for the district, we found that our most negative themes, the top two haven't changed. The first one, with 36% of our negative comments, were that students don't get along. Students said things like, some people can be mean, there's some friendship issues, people make fun of people, and talk behind their backs. We had 27% of our negative comments were about teachers or administrators, people saying that sometimes teachers are mean, they yell, they might set unrealistic standards, or they send people out in the hallway, so things that students don't like that are going on in their classrooms. And then we had 7% of our negative comments this time, were students who were unhappy with their learning, believing that schoolwork isn't going to be used outside of school, math homework is obnoxious, and there are too many assessments. So those were some of the negative comments that we got. That was a little bit different from the third negative theme last winter, which was just, I don't like school in general. When we looked at our positive comments, we had the same top two positive themes as last winter, again, which was, I like school, or I like this school. This time, I grouped those together, so we had 33% of our positive comments this time were around, I like school. And these are the really fun ones to read, the school is amazing, I wish I could stay here forever, I love coming to school every day. 24% of our positive comments were about teachers. This top one was one of my favorites this time, I like having amazing teachers when I come to the school, the staff who keep our school clean, and the principal who keeps everyone safe, which I thought was very nice. And then we had 9% of our positive comments this time around, like the food at school, which was also great to read, and a big compliment to our school nutrition staff.
Yes.
They're even called out, right?
Yep. The food that the lunch ladies make is very good food, exactly. Yep. So that was our overall survey.
I just want to point out that you put the comments just as a student.
Yes, I just copy and paste them from the student responses.
I just want everyone to know when they're looking at it that you know how to spell principal.
Thank you. They're your pal.
Yes. So for next steps, we have staff and building leadership teams. They will continue to work on our Part B, which you guys have been updated when we do those round robins, and they, they go through and they look at developing action steps that are specific to the data around their building, and they've been extremely enthusiastic about that work. And then, we have a student engagement group that will begin to look at like those themes and those focuses, and our job is then to look, what are the things that we could do district-wide? Like last year, we had some professional learning around our problem solving and restorative practices in hopes of impacting that, that, those questions that went around the problem solving. And then in the spring, we will administer the survey again, April 11th through the 14th, and that will help to inform us towards our strategic goal.
Any questions?
Kathy?
Grade level response rates, I saw the percentage on the, that's the first, second slide, or third slide? Is there like a age group, do the littler kids respond more than the bigger kids, or is it pretty, okay?
They do. Yes, teachers provide, we have designated times for teachers to provide time for students to take the survey, but you can only say to a group of seniors, you have to take the survey, and they are free to take it if they choose to.
I'm, I'm encouraged, I mean, the increases in both areas is good. Kudos to the, the staff who had such increases around, you know, teachers care about me, they expect me to do my best. And you know, you can't always please everyone, right? So, but this is good, and the food comments made me smile, so, it's just cute. The kids are very focused on the food they get.
Some comments mentioned very specific menu items.
This is my favorite. I love when this is on the menu. Oh, follow up to the question about response rate, were the comments the same, or is it lower grade kids more likely to leave comments, or was it the reverse?
So this time around, we actually had the elementary teachers do a brief presentation to the students ahead of time, that went over the options on the survey, to kind of introduce them to what does it mean to strongly agree versus disagree. They did introduce that idea of an open-ended item, and we had a very high number of responses from elementary students this time, as compared to last year, and I believe it was because of that overview that they provided. So there were more elementary students who responded, but because we have, I think we had about 90 to 100 elementary schoolers at each building, and about 60 to 70 middle and high schoolers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't comment yet, hello, Dr. Ryan?
No, no comment yet.
All right, challenge it. Remember, kids out there for the next one.
I look forward to it.
That's it.
Rachel?
So, with these results, do, when you're putting together the action plan, do the kids know based on your voice what we heard? Is it clear in words like that, like we're implementing these, all these things that you've been implementing? Do they know, like, hey, you let your voices be heard, we, we got this on, and now this is what we're doing in response to that? So do they say, does teachers use that language ever, like?
I think it's a question that we'd have to ask the principals to probably like weigh in on, because we're not seeing that day-to-day part of it.
Sure, answer is yes. Met with one of my BLC members today in regards to the Student Engagement Survey and our plan for January 15th, when we have our next staff PD day, to specifically help staff recognize certain things. For example, one of our areas was in student voice, in their ability to set classroom expectations and norms, and as we are transitioning semesters, there may be students who change teachers at semester, and so, again, revisiting what we do at the start of the school year in September to set norms and expectations with students, again, do that in reference to the fact that students recognize that we get to do that here at this school, as a, as a question on the survey.
I can speak to one specific example, excuse me. After the survey data last year about keeping the school clean, we started a, what we call a Clean the Nest Initiative, because we have a flight period with nest days and, or whatever. But, definitely in the presentation to students, it was using the data from the survey to identify what they consider to be the needs of the school, and one of the ways that we were going to tackle one of those issues.
We've just started the initial planning of what we're doing on the 15th, but already had the conversation around each of the grade level comments, really trying to specifically hone in on some of the things that kids do want, that aren't really necessarily 100% realistic to have, like a bigger playground times two, for instance, so, but, but that they're heard, that they want the space, and that's really, they want to be able to play and, and have a conversation around that, so, so yes, to answer the question, sure.
Both elementaries took on a process for helping our students learn how to work through conflicts this past year, and that was a goal in both of the buildings, and I think we have been very deliberate about letting the students know that it was feedback from the survey from last year. Now our kindergarten through second grade, who does, do not take the survey, you know, aren't really aware of where that, you know, information's coming from, the older students hopefully are.
Thank you. Yeah, that's just so awesome. You put all this work into it to get their voices, and to have that follow-up, I bet just increases that sense of belonging, because like, hey, somebody thought of me, I filled this out, it was worth it, and now that we're talking about how to get along, like, that's really awesome, and I just really appreciate the work behind that.
I do put every recommendation that students make in a document for the principals, no matter how impossible, like growing the playground sizes, or bringing your dog to school, was another one, yeah, so they all get mentioned on there.
It's a good idea, actually.
I like it personally, but.
Yep.
Okay.
No, just thank you for all the work, and thank you to the principals and all the staff who have put the effort into helping make our schools an even better place. an even better place every day for our children. I appreciate to see the, I like seeing the results. And obviously, I think our kids see it too. But there's also some more work to do for them. And I think we can't, like you said, you can't solve everything. But it's good to know that their voices are heard and that we're taking action to better their environment even more than we already do. So thank you very much.
Karen?
Good, thanks. Thank you.
No, my question was pretty much what Rachel asked. So I'm good. Thank you.
My last, kind of, just wanted to kind of understand some things. When we look at the comments regarding the homework and when, you know, you get the, the statement of math homework is obnoxious and unneeded, is that something where we're seeing those sorts of comments at like the higher levels where, you know, we're learning cosines and things of that nature aren't as fun as when you first learn like, oh, this is how you figure out how long something is and things like that? Or is it something that, where we could maybe kind of, kind of reverse engineer this and say, because we've implemented the new math curriculum, this is a, this is a little bit of growing pains? Is that, does that make sense? Or is this something where, yeah, when older kids aren't, aren't really that enthused about learning about doing long division of fractions, you know, to figure out surface area of a, of a cylinder or something like that?
I think some of the conversations I've had, particularly with Chris and Charlie in the middle school and high school building leadership and administration, is just making sure that, that there's connections being made for students about why this is important to you. We had, I had one comment that I didn't list on here, but the student said, I wish we could take a class that where we learn how to write checks. Well, that student hasn't taken personal finance yet, but they'll get there pretty soon and they'll learn how to write checks. So making connections to those real-world application of skills that I think is really key for kids. We saw that in our, some of our student focus groups as well, where they were saying, well, I don't understand how this is important. We know it's important. We know how they will use it in their everyday life, but it's just making those connections clear. And I think that that student in particular, maybe if, understanding a little bit more why this is important would not, maybe not make that comment. Or maybe they would if they just don't like.
Coming from my world previously of where we dealt a great deal with customer satisfaction surveys and reading those comments of, oh, this is why I'm unhappy with the, the service I got, or this is why I'm unhappy for whatever reasons. And having to work backwards of, okay, so how did we get to this point? How much are items that, you know, are just kind of baked in the cake? Where it's like, you know, this, at school, like, you know, especially when you talk about the, the high school level where, you know, the reponderance of the pajama day really doesn't, you know, isn't a thing where, oh, great, I get to look forward to that. But rather a sweet, like, I got to come in, do my thing, and then, man, I gotta close tonight at, at the Wendy's or something like that. So it's not the, the level of, of excitement, maybe not as much as someone who's, you know, a third grader or something like that. Is that something that, where that's kind of taken into account? Or is it just a, you know, we, we have to kind of, you know, redefine what high school looks like as a whole?
I think this is making me think about our, our trust work that we've been doing over the past year, especially around the pillar of clarity. And we, as administrators, have been working really hard to be clear with each other. And it's also about being clear with the students to help build that trust as well. So even answering the tough questions about, you know, we want more recess time. Well, why can't you have more recess time? It doesn't work within the structure of the school schedule. Why can't you have half a day of recess and half a day of learning? Well, because there's what the purpose of schooling is. So really clarifying even those tough questions and comments for them. A lot of the comments that we've gotten are not really things that are possible to change. Like, we did have some comments about the pool, you know, make a better pool. Well, unfortunately, that's not something that we just have laying around is a better pool that we can pick up and install. So it's making clear the reasons why we can and cannot make some of these changes, I think is important as well.
Great. Anyone else with any follow-ups? Thank you so much, both.
Thank you.
Item C, superintendent's report, Dr. Olson.
Thank you. Most of my superintendent's reports usually highlight the important news and celebrations over the last two to three weeks that we've had. Tonight, my report, report is going to reflect a little bit more over the last seven and a half years about some of those things that have been celebrated in this boardroom collectively. Those celebrations have come through a lot of hard work by people who sit in this room and who are employees of the district. And a lot of that work isn't visible to people. So the stuff that gets brought forward to you tonight, as you know, or any other night, there was a lot of hard work and a lot of that isn't visible. So looking at the outcomes often, isn't really where a lot of the heavy lifting comes. And a lot of times, we don't celebrate that heavy lifting. A lot of people are looking for those end of outcomes and not understanding all that heavy lifting that went there. So a huge thank you to all of you, those of you in the back of the room and who sit in the district for all of that heavy lifting over the last seven and a half years. So here are some collective celebrations and accomplishments. It was about eight years ago in this room when I had a 10-hour interview. That was a long interview. I will remind those people in there, that was quite the interview. And the board shared at that time the priorities that the district needed with me. One of those was to determine the school budget and financial planning. There wasn't a deep understanding of where the school was in its finances. And proud to say that we've started a Fund 46. We've added a capital improvement plan. And through some very strategic financial plannings, have maximized our state aid and limited the taxpayer burden on that. And it put ourselves in a very good financial position at this point. The district did not have an employee compensation plan at that time. And so I was tasked with putting together that. We did that within six weeks. That is quite an accomplishment. And that was due to a team of 15 people within the district, including educators that sat there and said what we want and what we do not want with a compensation plan. The employee handbook was, maybe looked a lot like a neighboring district's handbook and wasn't necessarily Whitnell's. And so that's been a work in progress to actually have an employee handbook that is Whitnell's and includes policies that are here. There was not an active strategic plan at the time. And we are finishing up year three of a strategic plan that has metrics and outcomes. And for the most part, is on direction to achieve all of the outcomes and metrics around financial planning, student achievement, and employee satisfaction. Maybe the biggest, I don't know. But after a failed referendum, the task was from the board is to pass a referendum. And to the point that when I was hired on July 1st, there was a possibility, or at that time was like, hey, let's just go to referendum this fall. And that was a very scary thing. So I think collectively, we sat back and we said, what do we need to do to make this work? And it really was around listening to the community, developing relationships, deeply understanding what it was, and spending a lot of time one-on-one in order to make that happen. And so we very successfully passed a referendum in 2018. My background, if those of you don't know, is in career and technical education over many years. The board knew that, and that was a goal that was put here that Whitnell did not have a very strong career and technical education program. At the time, there was one high school tech ed teacher, one high school business teacher, and one middle school teacher. Today, as I leave, there are two high school tech ed teachers, two business marketing teachers, two at the middle school, and we've added computer science. So feel very good about the trades and the work that's there. We did not have youth apprenticeships in place at that time. We are on track to have 45 students this year, complete youth apprenticeships in that. So I think that that, one can put a checkmark by it. The board had, the district had started a journey with something called PLEX, another acronym that was Whitnell, at the time, which really embraced personalized learning. Yet there wasn't a future plan with what's next, including that next school year. So as we sat down and worked with educators about what does that actually mean? What does it mean for middle school? How do we personalize learning? Very proud to say that one of the outcomes of the perspectives was really to talk about the unique story of every child, which really embraced what that was, I think, when the district put that in place. And to a lesser extent, I remember one of the board members at the time looking at technology devices. Those of you who know my background also know I was a director of technology. And at that time, we were having high school students use iPads. That's not a very effective technology tool going on to post-secondary education. So proud today to say that we have one-to-one devices that go all the way down to first grade and are, are very proud of what students are able to do with that. I also walked into what I would say some unanticipated priorities that maybe I wasn't given a little bit of heads notice on, and maybe not everybody was aware of that. We were in the middle of some declining student achievement scores. And I don't know that that was publicly shared at that point. That was a situation that we uncovered collectively. But I'm proud to say recently that those scores have turned the corner and we are seeing great trajectory on where they will go in the future. There was also at that time, those who remember, student behavior at our middle school was not in a great place. I remember sitting in this room, so a lot has happened in this room, February 1st, 2018, not that it's etched in my mind at all, in, in the company of about 60 parents and talking about our middle school behavior at that time, not being in a place of having some procedures and policies in place to make sure that that could be put into control. And so while middle schoolers are middle schoolers, happy today to say that there's a lot of headway that we've made toward middle school behaviors and expectations for students in that specifically, but across the district. One of my first meetings in the district was to, I sat in on a meeting in which the school board at that time was writing their own school board policies. That was a little overwhelming and scary. And so happy to say that we have a policy committee that our public is now able to access those policies online. And also have moved all of our board packets online, so they are able to be much more accessible to the public and are being created with a lot more accuracy and timeliness. We all know that the unanticipated priority came up of school safety for a while. We're one of the only area districts that did a district-wide evacuation, which we closed down Layton Avenue, which is not an easy task to do in the middle of a day at any point, and evacuated all 2,500 students from all of our buildings to a safe place. And also did some parent reunification. And I'm thankful for the partnerships of our municipalities to help partner with us in that school safety. I don't think I need to say a lot, but COVID was an unanticipated priority that we just managed through. We're glad to keep our schools open during all of that time. And I think a lot was learned by everybody. A lot of work along the way. We've increased the rigor. We are up to 21 advanced placement courses that we offer to our students in high school. And if you remember, Charlie just brought forward the achievement that our district received by getting a silver medal for that in the top 9% of all districts in the state our high school was. And also the access, meaning that we provide access to all students to that, which is the top 13% of Wisconsin high schools. Strengthening student support services when we came. And we joke about it, but it was, it was what it was. We had one social worker and two school sites that resided in the basement of the high school. And we're not out in buildings providing services. So very pleased today say that we have four school sites and three social workers across the district to provide services to students in the buildings where they know our families, students, staff best. We also implemented the student family assistance program and did that initially through some funding and still use some grant dollars to allow us from alternative. We know that there are root causes often when students start exhibiting some behaviors. And sometimes getting to those root causes will make a huge difference. So making those much more accessible to our students and families. There was not a, a weekly staff communication. So the e-weekly was created. There was not a weekly family communication. The connect was created. And there was a document called the viewpoint, which transformed into the Whitnell window, all of which received accolades from the Wisconsin School Public Relations Association. Over the time, we've held a variety of Parent Learning Academies focus groups, community listening sessions. And recently, we just finished up the first part of the ABC Learning Academy for any community member or parent who wanted to learn more about the district. Opportunities for employee voice, we talked about student voice, have been added such as the district building leadership committee, the district support staff leadership committee, curriculum facilitators. And this was our fourth annual employee satisfaction survey, of which all employees have given the opportunity to hear a voice. There were not a lot of data systems in place at the time. And so by adding things like EduClima, Qualtrics, using Infanting Campus more and Skyward, we now have access to data. Our educators have access to data. And we are becoming much more data literate as a district, which allows us to improve our student achievement. Structures for curriculum instruction, such as the Curriculum Hub, making sure there are learning targets, assessments, and then some expectations around instruction, instructional delivery are all there. So while not glamorous on some of that stuff, it's heavy lifting behind the scenes. And without those structures, you will not be able to achieve that. So I'm very proud of that. There's also been some fun things along the way. Creating the prospectus, the tagline of we're all in, was fun. Having a logo, rebranding Whitnell, that did not really have a lot of that. I've shared with a lot of you last year at John Cohen's retirement, the Marion Bright, which we were able to do again this year, is an, is an amazing event to be part of. I enjoyed the mascot makeover. So partnering with the former Whitnell Education Foundation and using some of their leftover funds to give our mascot an actual makeover. So it no longer looks like Cookie Monster or Grover or whatever that royal blue fur was. Very proud of the video scoreboard. It was one of the first things that got asked of me at football games. And why doesn't it work after the Falcon Field redo? And proud to say that it works today. And none of it was done with taxpayer dollars. And that's a very important thing to say. A half a million dollars raised by the community to support that. We have currently an annual staff recognition program in Luncheon. Previously, staff who are retiring, it was an optional event outside of the district in the evening. And, and staff who have, have years of service and retirement deserve the recognition of the entire staff. And so that's an annual event that people look forward to. So proud of that. During COVID, we offered something that was very unique from any district. And I'm very proud of the senior succession. I think we did it in a way that no other district did. And not only do we graduation walk through our elementaries, we have our, our graduates walk through every single building. And that's also very unique to Whitnell. Without giving away a lot of information, riding the back of a motorcycle as part of Hoppy and Harley must be very challenging. But that also has been a very enjoyable activity for the last four years. So in this room, we've recognized individual students, staff members in school buildings, in all of the individual and team recognitions that they've had. So this board, this boardroom has a lot of memories for me. It's where I started. It's where my last night of a board meeting is tonight. The district is starting to realize a lot of the outcomes for putting those structures in place. And it's going to serve the district while moving forward. I have recently been made aware of some future recognition that the district will be receiving, and I'm extremely proud of that. Unfortunately, I cannot share that with the board tonight. So when you receive that in the future, it's something to look forward to. So it is truly has been an honor for me to serve the students, staff, parents, and Whitnell, or, excuse me, community of Whitnell for the past seven and a half years. And that concludes my superintendent's report.
You did forget that the, didn't look like this in here when you got here.
It did not look like this. We were over there and it was China White Walls and all of that. That's true.
That's right. Any other questions for Dr. Olson or any comments? Moving on to nine announcements.
Fifth grade Girl Scouts out of HEE are hosting a coat drive from now until January 19th. They have drop-off locations at both Janesville and Godcell entrances to the building. They're looking for gently-used, clean or new coats to drop off. They're also having an event on the 19th from 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. It's going to be a fun event where they will have hot chocolate and cookies to share. So if you have any of those items to donate, please drop them off. If you're a procrastinator and just want the hot chocolate cookies, come see them on the 19th.
Fair enough.
Yeah, so Music Boosters has a meeting tomorrow night, 6:00 p.m., Door 30 at the high school, which is over by the band room. So any parents who are involved can come to Music Boosters tomorrow night. We have an exciting year that we're hosting solo and ensemble. And so the district is going to need many, 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 many volunteers for that festival. So please consider signing up for that. And please consider participating in Music Boosters. Also, I believe there is a Greek night fundraiser on Saturday at Clifford's with Greek food to support students who are taking a trip. And I believe that there's information out there online about that. And you can still sign up to either go to Greek night or to get takeout food on Saturday night.
Anyone else? Very good. Moving on to 10. Adjourned to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.85, subsection 1, subsection C, considering employment promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. And E dot E, deliberating or negotiating And E.E., deliberating or negotiating purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business wherever competitive or bargaining reasons require closed session, specifically discussion of an interim superintendent contract. Do you have a motion to go to closed session?
Some votes.
I have a first.
A second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none? Need a roll call vote, please.
Quinn.
Yes.
Yeah, hi.
Jessie.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Jason.
Aye.
Karen.
Aye.
Kevin.
Yes.
Motion carries. We are slowly...
All right. We are back in open. It is 8:18 p.m. I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract with Ed Brzezinski to assume the role of interim superintendent for the Whitnell School District.
Second.
I have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, meeting debrief.
So I have a couple of things. Just regarding our Whitnell School Board meeting protocols, I'd like to point out number seven, speak only when recognized, and number 10, encouraged balanced participation of all members. I felt that when our student council representatives the conversation and sort of peppering the conversation with questions. I think when that happens, it kind of, it doesn't let all of the board members have an opportunity to engage in that conversation. And so, I just think out of respect for all of the board members, it would be helpful if we would hold back those comments until the students have finished their presentation. I think that would just be a good practice for us. Also, I wanted to say thank you to all of my colleagues on the board for their hard work on the interim superintendent work. I know there's been a lot of special meetings and a lot of time put into this decision and into this effort, and so I just wanted to thank everyone.
Anyone else? Very good. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Second.
I have a first and a second. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor?